Hi, this is Angela Urban. I'd like to call this meeting. Well, the green light is on, but you're not hearing me? Hello? Test, test? Perhaps I just need to be closer, I don't know.
Can you make sure that the volume's up, please? Thank you.
I would like to call this meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission to order at 7:01. Terry, would you be able to take role of the members present?
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Ms. Holliday.
Can you hear me?
Ms. O'Donnell.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
And Mr. Meese.
Here.
Thank you. I hope this is working. Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Give him a minute, he's gonna go check. We'll hold one moment. Okay, thank you. All right, we have two minutes that we need to approve. One is from the October 2nd regular meeting on October 2nd, 2024, and then also a special meeting on October 23rd, 2024. So we'll do those one by one, starting with October 2nd, the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I would move to approve.
Okay. Do any members of the commission have any corrections or amendments to make to the minutes? Okay, I had one. I had asked the last regular meeting that we be able to discuss follow-up with the Imagine Urbana draft plan that we all had as our assigned homework. But I think because it was missing from the minutes, it wasn't able to be added to the agenda. And so I would like to correct that because I had requested, at that last meeting, I had requested for us to discuss it for the study session, but instead, we are going to be discussing the CLG grant, which the confusion there, I believe, was we had also requested a special meeting for that CLG grant, which we did have. And I think it's okay that we are having a little bit of follow-up on that, but having some follow-up on the Imagine Urbana draft plan would have been useful as well since those comments are due to the city, I believe by mid-November is when they are closing it out. So I just mentioned here if we could get that corrected, and I think that's it. So I would just ask, are all members in favor of?
I think you need a second for the minutes.
Oh, wait, hold on, sorry. Oh, my apologies, yeah, I forgot the second. Is there a second to motion for the approval of the minutes with amendments?
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All members in favor, please say yes.
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 All members opposed, please say no. Okay, the minutes are approved as corrected and written. Now for the special meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2024. This meeting was called specifically to discuss the CLG grant. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, do any members of the commission have any corrections or amendments to make to these minutes?
I have one.
Go ahead.
On the fifth page, I think, let me see. It's the last one, yeah, the fifth page of the minutes. Third to the last paragraph, it starts out Phyllis Winters-Williams approached. I think, well, I think I mentioned it at that meeting, but she and Susan Apple, who's a couple paragraphs earlier, Susan says she represents PACA, and Phyllis does too, but it doesn't mention that. And then she said, she stated that "they" have been wanting to work, and I think "they" is PACA probably, and maybe also people in your neighborhood perhaps, because Phyllis lives in one of the historic houses in the Main Street Historic District. So I'd like to add after Phyllis Williams, comma, representing PACA, and as a homeowner in the Main Street Historic District, comma, approached the HPC. Just to clarify who she was and what "they" refers to. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Trent. All right. All members in favor, please say yes.
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 All members opposed, please say no. All right, these minutes are also approved as corrected and written. All right, moving along to written communications. Marcus, do you want to mention this? Okay.
Sure. Back near the end of October, we had received an email from Stuart Berlacher regarding the local historic landmark at 108 North Weber. And you've got, you'd received that email directly from Stuart, and I believe you also received paper copies. We also received an email that I distributed today, kind of a response from Kathleen Jones, who's the property owner there. She had heard that we were going to be discussing the home on the agenda today, so she responded to the commission, and then Angela replied back to her. So I did look, and Kathleen had applied for a certificate of appropriateness to do some repairs back in 2017. I spoke with Kevin Garcia, our zoning administrator, who was the Historic Preservation Secretary at the time, and he remembers, you know, processing it. There were some difficulties finding contractors, which is no surprise to anybody on the HPC. And then, you know, work did not proceed. And actually, the application for the certificate was withdrawn by staff because I don't think it ever actually got heard by the HPC. So if she, you know, as indicates in her email, it sounds like she's wanting to, you know, resume that work, and I can certainly be in touch with her about applying for the certificate to do that. There are currently limited funds available for folks from the city to do repairs. Often, it is, you know, for income-eligible people or for seniors. I think I passed that on in the email to Stuart, if he wanted to pass that information on to the property owner. At that time, I hadn't realized that Kathleen had applied for a certificate of appropriateness earlier. So I'm not sure how the HPC wants to approach this, if there is a way to approach it other than to, you know, encourage applying for the certificate of appropriateness. If people know of available contractors for Kathleen, it sounds like she would be willing to use that information and to try and, you know, locate somebody that can do the work.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if we would like to make a recommendation for somebody who might perhaps do that, how do we get ahold of her? Would we have an address or contact information?
For Kathleen?
Hmm, yes.
We can provide you with her email address because she did, you know, respond to Angela saying, "If you have any resources, please let me know," and we can share that with the members of the HPC if you want to contact her individually or as a member of the HPC.
What kind of a, what, how would you prefer me to contact her? Are you saying I can just contact her as an individual?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And should he use his Urbana City email address, or does that matter?
If you are going to represent yourself as a member of the commission, you might want to check with Angela and say, "I want to recommend to her this." And if it is an appropriate sort of recommendation coming from a representative of the city, then you should contact her or can contact her as a representative of the commission. If you feel that it might be something that might not be the stance of the commission itself, then you are welcome to contact her as an individual citizen, and in that case, you should use your email, your personal email address, and say, "I'm contacting you as a resident of the city of Urbana, not as a member of the HPC." I often have opinions that don't reflect the city, so I make very clear when I'm representing my own individual opinion versus representing an employee of the city.
Right, and I don't think the city has a list of contractors that they generally recommend, so it would be a personal reference.
Not for specifically historic preservation. We do have a contractor list of people who have done work in the city, and we provide that when requested, but they aren't preservation-specific experts.
But I would say, as a commissioner, with the level of expertise as part of this commission, I think it would be okay to represent as part of the commission in providing potential contractors, as long as there's not a conflict of interest that hasn't already been brought up. But something about this email, when she had reached out because she had heard that we would be referencing Stuart's email, the email that she sent, it sounded like she was, there was a little bit of concern in there. She mentioned that a friend alerted her that the property would be mentioned tonight. And so when I responded, I wanted to ensure, you know, that we're not, we're not like the historic preservation police by any means, you know, we're a resource. And so I think all of us come with our varying expertise in one form or another, and so being available to anyone in the public who reaches out to us who might need, you know, might need some suggestions with potential contractors that are approved, I think that's totally okay.
And we've done that in the past. People at the Lindley House were asking for contractors for half-round gutter replacement, and Alice provided some of that, and we've provided some information for masons. So, and, you know, the only point I would like to make is, we should make clear to her that if you're going to do work on the exterior of the house other than painting, you really should apply for a certificate of appropriateness.
Right, and it's hard just to make, and it would be hard to know if the person I'm thinking of would be appropriate because I don't know what kind of work she's thinking of. So, I mean, it's kind of, you know.
You can contact her.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. Is there anything else we need to discuss for the email?
In that, about that same house, I talked to Stuart Berlacher today, and I think he would have come tonight to talk about the house and his, what he thinks he's found, and excepted it was not a good night for him. His son's birthday, and out-of-town friends, and something else going on, and he said it was just too much. So I said another time, I'd let him know when we're having another meeting, and maybe he can come, show us what he thinks, what he's found. And I'm sure Kathleen would find that very interesting, too, if her house has got a little more history than we know about.
And now that you mentioned that, just something maybe for you to think about, if you would find it interesting or educational to, you know, have a study session or staff report, maybe just a five-minute thing of, "Hey, this meeting, we're going to talk about the Gothic Revival Cottage, and just a recap, you know, here's why it was landmarked, and if the property owner wants to be invited to speak, or the land marker does. If you're not interested in that, just let me know, and we can let that thought sit on the shelf. But if it piques your interest, okay." And it might draw some, you know, public attendance.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving to audience participation. Does anyone in the audience want to address the Historic Preservation Commission on any topic? Say your name.
Susan Apple, is this on? Honestly, guys, I can't hear you out here. But I'm Susan Apple, I'm representing PACA, but I'm also a former professor of architectural history, among other things. And I wanted to mention, since this Gothic Revival Cottage came up, I used to use that as an example in my architecture classes and my American history, architectural history classes. And it's always been a mystery as to its date. It was always sort of understood to be probably 1850s, but if this new information can tie it a little more precisely to a date, I think that would be useful for my purposes, perhaps for general purposes. It's hard to know about those things, but thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other public input? Okay, there are not any continued public hearings. There is not any unfinished business. There are no new public hearings. We do have new business, which is the Historic Preservation Commission bylaws, which we all have a copy of to review the proposed, uh, I can't talk anymore, review of proposed changes. Go ahead, Marcus, if you want.
Okay, so upon reviewing the agenda, we were directed by executive staff to postpone working on the bylaws because they would like to address the bylaws for all of the city's boards and commissions in a consistent fashion. Some boards and commissions are regulated by primarily their bylaws and very little by some other code. Like, the city code might say, "City code establishes this commission, and it's got four people on it, and their terms are two years. See the bylaws for everything else." If you read the zoning ordinance, there are pages and pages of regulation in the zoning ordinance that regulate the Historic Preservation Commission. And as I was reading through my proposed revisions and looking at the section, for example, about abstention votes, and I thought to look at the zoning ordinance, and I found in the zoning ordinance, if you look in the comments of the bylaws, abstention votes are not to be sent, to be considered to run with the majority, even though that's what the bylaws say. So, you know, I pointed that out in the comments, and to bring them into congruity, you would either have to change the bylaws or change the zoning ordinance. And changing the zoning ordinance requires a recommendation by the Plan Commission, a completely separate commission, and then approval by city council. So, and the zoning ordinance also handles the Zoning Board of Appeals that way and the Plan Commission. There's a lot of bylaws regulation in the zoning ordinance. So with that being said, executive staff said, "Please hold off on this. We want to look at this holistically," which is kind of the same thing we were told back in February when we were going to bring this to the HPC the first time, and we're told to kind of stand down. But I would say, please feel free to look through the bylaws as they stand, look through my proposed changes, and also think about other changes that you might consider might be good ideas. And then when we get direction, you know, we might be presented a model set of bylaws by city staff. I'm not sure how the next step is going to go. But just know that we are attempting to work on it and bring it, you know, into the 21st century.
Can I ask you a question about some of this, or should we hold all that?
I'm going to stick by the stand-down.
Talk about it now.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm glad to converse with you individually about stuff.
Could I ask? Your call. Angela? So, okay, I understand that the Planning Commission, there's a lot of legalities in a public hearing, which is a certain aspect of our bylaws. But our bylaws for the commission are really also about how we proceed and how we do our own meetings. This is outside of the delicate issue of a public hearing over a contested property. So I think it'd be appropriate to, at least, I mean, tonight, I was wishing to provide, in addition to our bylaws, which I find to be a sort of a telling omission, which hadn't occurred to me before, but how many times do we actually read our bylaws? Now that you've asked us to review them, I've brought forward tonight a recommendation for an assertion within the bylaws concerning how agenda items are created by the commissioners. I don't think that would be something that would be inappropriate for us to, you know, consider, or at least to request that these be now part of the new bylaws. And if the city lawyer is going to be creating our bylaws and not the commission, I want this to be added to our new bylaw structure.
If you want to send it to myself and also to the chair, I'd be glad to figure out where they belong in the new revision bylaws and kind of insert that language in there and mark it as, you know, submitted by Commissioner Roberts and...
But of course, I would like it to be approved by the commission before we ask them to do that, so...
I've been told not to discuss the bylaws at the commission, so I ask that we respect our executive management's direction. I'm probably already pushing it by talking as much as I am about it, but I wanted to let you know that we weren't just ignoring the hope to revise the bylaws, but we were directed to stand down. But we can do some work on the back end, which is, you know, collect all of the suggestions made by people and submit those to, you know, the legal division and executive branch.
Okay, so I've submitted my recommendation to the members of the commission, and if they want to respond to you individually, that's fine.
Absolutely, yep. And did you send that, like, by an email digitally so I can?
I will, but I just brought them physically as a printed item tonight.
Okay, yep, thank you.
All right, thank you, yeah. I appreciate that you've sent these bylaws with the comments on it. We did all get a chance to review, so if anyone else has comments the same as Dennis's discussed, you can send those to Marcus and myself. All right, moving along. So before I pass it to Marcus, I just want to ask, is there any monitoring to report on the existing historic properties by commission members?
Even if that's just you driving by and happened to have seen something?
Exactly, because we're about to get into the division, but just...
Yeah. I don't really know, and I could ask the owner, but I wondered if anybody here does, or if there's a building permit or anything. The Royer House, it's the Bucie in Oregon. I don't think it's been occupied. I think this is maybe the second school year, and there's a shipping container in the driveway. And, does anybody know?
Is it a shipping container or a giant roll-off dumpster?
Could be either one, I guess.
Okay, there's been a roll-off dumpster sitting there for a long time.
Yeah, that's what it is, then, okay. I guess there's some on-and-off remodeling or something, I just...
And we, probably maybe six, eight months ago, they called and asked about, "Hey, we've got some ideas for some exterior window replacements." We talked with them about them, and we said, you know, "Here are some suggestions, but anything you do, you know you have to get a COV." And they know that now. If you happen to see, you know, holes in walls and tarps...
I haven't.
Please, yeah, definitely let us know. And so usually what will happen is, if we do get a certificate of appropriateness, even if it's administrative, a minor work, I will forward that on to HPC so that you know what we've approved administratively.
All right, thank you. And then, still talking about the monitoring of historic properties, as we discussed the last regular meeting, about the division so that we can better monitor as a group. Marcus, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Sure, so you have a pretty colored map in front of you with sets of colored markers on them. So I tried to go through and divide things up, not necessarily numbers equal, but in areas. And so, you know, going from the top down in the legend to the left, we've got three downtown landmarks, we've got six far-south landmarks. We've got, the far west is the Ricker House, but it's also Buena Vista Court, which has eight properties, which there's usually some pretty regular activity in there. So I kind of just lumped those two items together, one district and one landmark. And then there's the north section, which is the Haberstadt House. And those are orange ones. There's King and Baptist Church, and then there's the 108 North Weber House, the Gothic Revival Cottage. And then in the south, there's five properties, five landmarks. There's four properties in one quote-unquote "district" with the two Royer Houses in it. Those are the red fuchsia ones. And then there's the west section with four homes on West Elm and one on West Green. And then the final one is the West Main Street Historic District, which is 14 homes in, you know, a couple-block area. These are just suggested divisions. If this makes sense to you, you are more than welcome to put dibs on one or the other. You know, I understand that people's schedules are different, and you've got different amounts of time. You might have to have somebody check in on your stuff if you're going to be away for an extended period of time. But any help you can provide is more than I'm able to do on a daily basis. And what we're simply looking for is, you know, you go check it out, you take a look at it, you can take some pictures if you want. And then, you know, every month or so, you walk by, drive by, make sure that, you know, we don't care what colors it's painted, but we care about new roofs and windows and signs and new, you know, accessory structures on the property, major landscaping going on, that sort of stuff. And you can just take another picture, email me, and say, "Hey, Marcus, what's happening here? Did you know what's going on?" And what I'd like to do is maybe, you know, put a spreadsheet online, a Google Sheet, with all of these, and you just check them off, or actually, better yet, put a date in the spreadsheet that says when you last checked it. And then everybody, you know, it's not holding everybody accountable, but it's there for you to know, "Gosh, I haven't checked on it in three months. I ought to get up there." Any suggested changes to the process, or holes I've missed in the process, or better ideas? Or anybody wants to volunteer for a section?
Yeah, I think this looks reasonable. Did you have anything else to say? Yeah, I think, I think this looks reasonable. Did you have anything else to say? Okay, yeah. And so I think, unless there is anything else to say, I think if people want to volunteer, please, by all means.
Sure, since we're going to do this. Because I live three blocks from the downtown, I would be happy to take the three blue ones, which are Main Street, Main Street, and the Hotel Royer.
Mm-hmm.
And if, I mean, I could also do the Victorian Cottage and the Haberstadt House, King and Baptist Church, and the, and I guess the three little gold ones.
Okay.
Because they're within walking distance of my home, unless somebody would love to do them as a project because they love those locations.
I think you're okay.
Okay.
I'd, I'd, the, the, I don't know what color that is. The one that says S, I guess the south one.
Mm-hmm.
There's four of them, High Illinois and two in Oregon. I go by the Oregon ones all the time.
Okay.
And, uh, that wouldn't be hard to look at the High Street one once in a while.
Okay. I'll put Trent down for the south.
Unless somebody else wants it.
What was that color?
South, I guess.
I'm calling it fuchsia.
I'm not real good on fuchsia. No, it's somewhere in the pink and purple, somewhere in there, but, okay.
And, you know, if the red section with six is just too big, it's fairly, would be fairly easy to split it up.
That one I just signed up for.
Mm-hmm.
So S colon five, are there supposed to be five in there?
It's because the Royer District actually has two houses in it.
Oh, because it's the two houses. That's right. Gotcha. Oh, yes, South Buzy, 701. Yep.
I can do the, the ones just below Trent, so W for the green markers.
Okay. Thank you.
I walk by those as well as the ones Trent selected all the time.
And, you know, if there, if there are leftovers, I am happy to fill in because I'm just so happy and excited that folks are taking the others and I can focus on one. And it would actually get me out of the office and take a little walk.
Which ones are left over?
The, this set of six in the far south, there's the Ricker House and the Buena Vista Court, which is the courtyard of eight little bungalows. And there's the West Main Street District. Which is that, two blocks, the 800 block of Main Street. You can thumb wrestle. I was, I, it kind of felt like David was really interested in doing one of these, and Kate as well. So, you know, if, if...
Can you hear me? But hello?
Sure. Okay.
Can anyone hear me? Oh, you can hear me?
And the nice thing is they're, they're just a couple blocks away from each other.
Hello?
Okay. Far west.
Two locations.
Yeah.
It's just the Green Street, the Ricker House, and then it's that Buena Vista Court.
Okay.
Correct, yes. There's eight, but they're all very close to each other. I'll take the F-S six, which is the...
Okay. Great.
West area.
All right. That's wonderful. Okay, I'll work with David and Kate and see if they want to, you know, take on the West Main Street District, or, you know, one does one side of the street and one does the other, or east and west, or whatever. Well, this is, this is great. What I can do also is, in that Google Drive, you know, put the folders with the landmark applications in them and the historic resource inventory survey, so you can see, you know, the characteristics and the photographs from the baseline of the landmarking date. Because who knows, you know, if something was landmarked 15 years ago and somebody added on something 10 years ago and nobody noticed? If you look at the pictures and it's like, wait, where'd that porch come from? You know, that's, yes, or where'd that porch go? Yeah. And so it's interesting. So like for the Royer House, there was a corrugated plastic roof that was put on over an open porch when it was landmarked. So it was clearly aftermarket. But even though they wanted to take off something that was aftermarket, they had to apply for a certificate of appropriateness to remove it because it was there when it was landmarked. It was approved, but, you know, we have our, our processes. Okay, I think that's it for monitoring.
All right. Thank you so much for making this map for us.
Thank you for requesting it.
And helping us monitor better. All right. So moving along with the staff report, is there a staff report?
Yes. So I think I handed out, did I hand out some sheets? So I spoke with Kevin and to address hopefully the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan comments. He said that he would like to get people's individual comments as soon as possible using the portal that they showed us. They'll be addressing those comments up until the day that they take it for, as a case to plan commission. So there's, they're continuing to do their study sessions with Plan Commission. They're going to be doing that for a couple more months. After they get all the comments to address and a draft of the document, a final draft, they're going to take that as a case to Plan Commission to get a recommendation to take it to City Council. So go ahead and submit your individual comments, put your markers on the map, put your, you know, send them the email text, comments to the plan, and we can go from there.
Okay. Just to confirm what you said. So if we add this to the agenda for our next regular meeting, we're not too late in that sense, right?
Correct.
And that would really just be to discuss because hopefully you are reviewing and making comments, because the comments are individual. But if there's anything that we want to discuss before we add a comment, I thought that's why we could talk.
Sure. Yeah. I, I think, the impression I got was no other boards or commissions are submitting a joint commission set of comments. So they're just asking each of the members to make their own individual. But if there are things you want to discuss, I don't see why not. We'll just make sure it's an agenda item for, you know, study session or new business or whatever the most appropriate slot is. It's hard to tell.
Yeah. And, and I don't believe we want to send any, like, as a commission. It still is very individual, but just if there's something you had a question on, or if there's something that people want to talk together with.
HPC bylaws, we already discussed that. CLG grant opportunity, we can, uh, let me look at the agenda. Okay, yeah, we've got another spot for that. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Preservation Plan, I propose, if you want, that we start reviewing the current plan after the CLG grants have been submitted, so we can focus on those. And then we can start, you know, having our book club and, you know, discussing a couple of chapters of the Preservation Plan every meeting. Preservation Month activities are still, as we had discussed, May 31st, the mid-century modern housing tours. Moving down to the historic property activities, we've had no recent inquiries about new landmarks. There's been no change in our certificates of appropriateness. Work continues at the Hotel Royer. You know, they're work, have been working on mostly interior work. They have had some discussion about installing two new monument signs that are, you know, going to have the snazzy Hotel Royer logo on them. And they want to do some landscaping in the outside. If, for some reason, they have some interest in having suggestions made regarding the limestone path at the northwest corner of their parking lot, I may send an email to you all to say, does anybody want to offer advice as a commissioner to them on how they can coordinate having a monument sign there at the corner while preserving the limestone path? You know, there's a lot of shrubbery there. There's a big old tree there that's 50 years old. I don't know what condition it's in. You know, I know, I remember Gina Paluso, when she was on the commission here and when we were doing the certificate of appropriateness, she had a concern about all of that disappearing. And Kevin Garcia shared with me, well, you know, there's a limestone path at the southwest corner of the complex of the mall, and it looks like there might be something similar over where the farmer's market is. You know, it is not original to the original hotel. It appears it was added in 83, when the 1983 addition was made.
I, I think I know somebody who worked on that and who was an Urbana Public Works employee.
Okay.
Worked for the Arbor Crew, and I, I think they put that path in there.
Oh.
Just to tidy things up, make it a nice place for people to walk.
Yeah.
So, uh, I don't, it, I'm pretty sure it's not anything to do with historic, anything with the hotel.
Okay. I think you're very correct. And that is the end of my staff report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. I just had one comment about the Preservation Plan. I think that's an excellent idea to wait until after we get the CLG grant application submitted. But in the meantime, if you are able to make that into a Word, or after that, I guess I should say, if you can make it into a Word document so that we can just make our own comments individually, again, the same kind of thing, not necessarily discussing, but just making comments for your own benefit. And then perhaps we'll add that as like a study session item in the coming months.
I can work on making it a Word document.
Kind of reminds me, does, does that hotel have one of our Urbana landmarks plaque? It does have one on it? Okay, good.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Now it's time for our study session, and this study session will be on the CLG Grants Projects Update. Dennis, would you like to say a few, a little bit about the application that you've put together?
I feel like I'm really the guy who's really in charge of it. I really think David Hayes is sort of leading our, our, our group. But we did have a meeting about a week ago Saturday to talk about how to address approaching, filling out the grant. I volunteered to try to fill out some of the estimates that would be needed for reprinting the updated brochure. We agreed that, well, we appreciate the fact that we can't apply for signage. Brian Adams was not able to attend because he was recommitted to something else, but Alona Matkowski did come, and she brought several, I don't know, like probably seven or eight documents about the intent and the purpose of the Roy District, which have been forgotten, basically, in the, in the succeeding years from 2008, when we were proposing the district as really an economic factor, a building interest in the community, and tourism besides education. So I think, and I've submitted my resume, which is part of the need for getting you professional, I don't know, those who are going to be working on some of the product of the grants and some of the work of the grants have to provide their bona fides. I know that Alona's finishing hers, but hasn't submitted it yet. So we have those things we have to think, talked about. Some things, but we really wanted to meet again before the deadline, and it wasn't clear to me. I mean, David Hayes did a really great job of making an outline, an abstract, filling out the abstract for the thing. But I don't understand how, how much more detail or how specific we need to do or make specific decisions ahead of time for applying for the grant because of the grant is for specific things. I don't know how general the application could be, but they do require a budget. So, I mean, I provide some information from which a budget might be drawn, but we didn't talk about the pro bono hours, how the, how those are figured. So there's really a lot of details. We only have about eight days left or seven days left to, to submit the grant. So my question to you would be, are you actually going to draft and fill out the application for what our part of the committee's been doing? And we don't know at all what the other people working on the other half of the grant proposal has done, because we don't have any conversation here.
Well, well, we're, so we're submitting two.
Yeah.
So it'll be separate.
It'll be separate? Okay.
Yes. And, and one thing I wanted to mention, but you might have comments as well. So in this certified local government program guidelines that we received, there is a page that kind of goes through, goes through the items that needs to be in the grant submission. And so my understanding is Marcus will submit, but I think it would be helpful if we can get it in that right order, so we can make it as easy as possible on, on staff. So I, So, I, I did, I mean, I think, you know, I really appreciate all the work you did and, and everybody else who's been working on this. I, I did read through it, and hopefully everybody did, everything looks good as far as the writing goes, but now we have to do that extra step of like getting it in the right order of what they're asking for, because they have some specific areas where they want the information. And then, you, you mentioned the, the budget. If, if it helps at all, I can, I can assist with that, or perhaps Marcus can, but I think there's a way we want to add that in there as well, of what we want to estimate, and it's not necessarily going to be exact, but, because it's an estimate, but we want to make sure that we are covering all the items that we plan on potentially using. And then, just another item I wanted to mention, when we spoke with John Presley, he had brought up a different location that had included translation into another language, Spanish specifically, and for where we are, we have a heavy population with Spanish as well as French, and if we want to add any estimate into the budget regarding that for some translation, we might want to do that as well.
So, you, you did have a conversation with Mr. Presley? Is that his name?
Correct.
Yeah. Then, would you share then maybe some notes about what you've learned, or, I mean, maybe you've actually just told them right now?
She had sent an email.
Oh, you did?
Last week, like the day of when we had it, I think it might have been last Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah. Okay, I'll look for that.
And I think it was an actual attachment, so it might be then easier to, to find.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to do is I was finally able to access the application portal today. I'm hoping, like you had, you click an apply now button, and it takes you in, and you have to start filling stuff out. I'm not sure if I can like skip forward to other screens without filling things in. What I'd like to do is take screenshots of all of the fields that we're supposed to fill, and then I can, you know, put that into like a blank PDF template and say, okay, here's the information that they're asking from us, please try and address that in your, you know, the narrative that you put together. Because I know they address it in the CLG manual, but the manual is not the online portal.
So, do you, are you going to request one, like a PDF file of it from the applicant or the offices?
I'm just going to ask you for, oh, just a word document saying, you know, here's what the online portal is asking for.
Yeah.
Here is what John showed us in the manual that they're going to be asking us for. When you give me something, you can just do it in a word document, but try and hit all the points that they're asking for on the portal. And there might be some stuff that doesn't apply, but things like the, you know, the budget and the timeline. I did make paper copies of the previous application for the website and the previous Royer brochure application. It's all in the Google Drive, in the folders, the project folders, but I printed them off. They're, the project applications previously were very short, they were like two or three pages long, but that was back when you had a paper document and you emailed it in, or in later years, it was a, a form that you typed stuff into the boxes. And the budgets were very rudimentary back then, now we have these forms that Andrews is familiar with, the five sub-forms for budgets and contracts and salaries. I don't know what the online portal looks like, so that's what I hope to figure out maybe tomorrow.
So, Angela, do we, I mean, I didn't really assume that I was sort of the head-charged person for the Royer project, because David Hayes really put together the abstract so well, but he didn't say that, well, I think he sort of, sort of said that he was sort of coordinating it, so I really should need, need to work with him and talk to him again. He's going to be in town, I assume, this weekend or whatever?
Yeah, I, I, if you don't mind doing that, I think that would be a good idea, and, and for now, until we get whatever specifically is on the website, I think we could go by the guidelines in the CLG grant PDF. But it does break it down, you know, a title, which you already have a title, you know, but, you know, scope of work, estimated project timeline, I think that needs to be added, I know it says to be decided. With the budget, we need to make sure we include the 30% in-kind, so breaking down the estimate on, on the various expenses, like, like you've mentioned with the examples, but we need to just put it all together. So, like I said, if, if you or David need assistance with that, I can, I can certainly assist. And then, there's a section for personnel, which is where, you know, like you would include the resume of each of the subcommittee members, and then also what type of project it is, which I believe it would fall under the education one, even though we have two that fall under education, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
And then Marcus, if there's a signature page on the website, Marcus will be the, the signer, and will be the official project manager.
We haven't really talked about it in our group, which is, you know, kind of late to pick up on, but Alona was suggesting that one of the, one of the possible asks is a permanent display, and she offered two places she thought were particularly good, but it would require that we would then have the permission of the property owners to be doing it. So, I don't know if we can talk about having a permanent display without that conversation being approved, and that might take months.
I would, I would say go ahead and include it in the project, and ask for the funds to do it, and, you know, the, the narrative says we have to obtain permission, and if we don't, well, then we simply don't ever do that work and, and expend those funds, and they just go, you know, they, they stay in their bucket.
Okay, so whatever funds aren't expended, we don't hold on to them, they just return back to the source?
Correct, and they don't hate us for not spending all the money, because...
Okay, well, great, we can imagine things then.
Yes.
Right, and I should mention, I did respond to that message, but if you didn't see it yet. So, I, you mentioned the Hotel Royer as a possible place in the Urbana Free Library. I, I think the Urbana Free Library would be the ideal spot, just because it is public, and it could complement the Hotel Royer's opening. If there is some part or a teaser, as you mentioned, that would be in the Hotel Royer, but to have the exhibit in the library could be a really excellent location. I did speak with the library board president, just to, just as informally, to ask if that would be something that they would consider potentially on, at their board, and they, and the answer was yes, but we would need to provide like the specifications, any details on it. If there is any information or elements that relate to the Urbana Free Library, since that is one of, of Royer's creations, that too would be of interest to them, so, anyway, it is, it is something that they would be willing to explore and approve, as long as we have the, the information for them.
So, that's great, I really appreciate the fact that you had that opportunity to do that, because I was thinking it would have to be some kind of a more formal, we'd have to approach them kind of the board formally and sort of talk about it, get their approval, which we don't have time to do that, so...
Well, we will need to do that, once we, if we get approved for the grant.
Yeah, right.
Then we would request formally. For now, it was just an informal ask, is this something they would consider, and the answer was yes.
And I could see it being actually a little bit in both places, you know, depending on the specifics, you know, that, that I think, I think the hotel would be interested probably too, but I haven't heard back.
Joseph Pryor, Pryor had, you know, made some comments during different conversations about wanting to, you know, to provide outreach and education stuff, and to focus on Joseph Royer, and I think Adelaide. So, I think he would be very interested in providing a, a space in one of the rooms to have a couple, three things, and then to have a nice redirect over to a full exhibit, and thank you to the Urbana Free Library, which also happens to be another, you know, Royer design. Here's the contact information for the library, call this number or email this person to, you know, arrange a tour while you're here visiting the city.
And our, in our discussion would be, was also that besides updating the brochure and making the map more, I don't know, useful in new ways, that David was saying that it would be also wonderful to have individual rack cards or, or pamphlets printed, and he talked about them being color-coded according to the type of services that the building provided. That would be interesting perhaps for, you know, to kind of group the buildings in an unusual way or a different way, to have those produced at the, and available at the sites also, because that would give more in-depth information than a small paragraph and a map. So, our conversations were about those things.
Dennis, would, I love postcards, like actual postcards that you can mail, and I don't ever end up mailing them, I've got them like hanging up like art. Do you think the rack cards could be done in a postcard format, so that, you know, people could mail them like a postcard, here's a Royer building, half of it is, or you know, a third of it is information about the building, and then there's enough space that people can put a stamp on it, and, and an address and mail it? Or is that really taking away too much space for the info on the building?
Uh, maybe, but nobody's proposed, proposed yet making postcards as part of the project, and it's not impossible to ask for that.
Well, and that's what I was thinking, was, was wondering if the rack cards could be postcards.
Yeah, but I think he's in, I think David was kind of really interested in the rack cards having his very specific kind of informational purpose.
Okay.
But, I mean, when you think about it, there are not that many postcards about Urbana that are available in Urbana.
Right.
So, this would be a real opportune time to provide a rack of, of postcards as part of the outreach process.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great idea.
David Hayes is also having some kind of AV issues, although he's listening. He said the postcard idea was very brilliant, so I'm quoting, he's kind of here in spirit.
Very good, Dave, you're on the ball too, hey? All right. Okay, all right.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I think that's excellent, and I just want to bring up too, because it reminded me, the postcard reminded me, I received a thank you, like note card from somebody that had a nice drawing of the Urbana High School on it, and it was like a thank you from a student or something, but it was just very well done, and so then you, you had me think about like, yeah, that, the idea of like people use postcards for art sometimes, they frame it. This little thank you card, I kept it specifically because I liked the, the actual drawing of, of the high school, and so just any kind of elements like that, that people could have as a keepsake, I think would, would definitely add a nice touch to this project. Okay, uh...
Urbana t-shirts. Now we're going to go wild, okay.
All right, Andrew, are you ready?
Yes. So, Kate, Kate Howell and I, and I met last week, just, I think it was Tuesday, the, the day before Wednesday, when you met with IDNR. The idea, we, we, you know, it's, it's detailed in the agenda, I don't want to be redundant, but the, our, like, like Dennis's project, our, our largest unknown was a budget, and, and the reason for that was, we don't know, we don't really have access to the city of Urbana's intern, full-time, summer, you know, what that costs, and, and, of course, so knowing what the ask is for the, for the monetary, you know, then we don't know what the full amount is, and then so naturally, we wouldn't know what the match is. And so, so there's, you know, Marcus's time, there's in-kind things from, from the commission too, and so that was our largest unknown, so just to make a reasonable budget for this to happen was probably our biggest hole, you know, like our, our largest unknown. But for the most part, we, we spelled out what, you know, are, the intent of it, and, and a lot of it had to do with knowing, knowing we'll, we'll be working on the historic preservation plan in, in the next year, just getting it, getting a vehicle in place, or scaffolding in place for, to convey information in a contemporary manner, in whether that's education or, or otherwise, and so that, that's kind of the, the spirit of the grant application.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate, since if the email wasn't seen, that had the, the notes with John Presley, he was really interested in this website update, and the elements that you added here, I think all of those are great to, to include, and I appreciate that you also added the one related to the homeowners and realtors, because that was something that he was interested in, but he, he suggested that we combine.
Okay, yeah, so, so, so the, the, the grant ask, it may, if that, if that is folded in there, it, it, it's all kind of speaking to the same, it's kind of all orbiting the same idea, and so, which is to convey information, improve that. So, so I think that, and it, and it, it falls squarely within education, and, and so, any, anything that can support that, that, that idea, I think is, is positive, so...
And, and I believe, and we, and Marcus and I talked about it too, I believe the city will be able to help get those numbers for the intern.
Okay, especially if it requires other people or interns for the, for the, the other, folding in that other education part, you know?
I know one of our city assistant engineers was working on a project that she recently used an, an intern for, so I can find out from her.
Yeah.
What she's paying. I know Kate has an intern, it'd be good to check with her what she's paying her intern. I think she's an intern, she might simply be an undergraduate student.
Yes, I, I don't, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know that.
And it'd be great if both of their hourly rates were the same.
Yeah.
You know, that the city was paying what the university was, but at least I can get you those numbers and...
Yeah, just, just to make a, a solid ask for, you know, it's just, at a certain point, it's just...
And I can provide my staff rate as well.
So, this kind of provided the, the framework and the impetus, but I know the detail of, of the, of the budget is, is, you know, you could ask, you know, for this, for the, the full amount, but it, it may be unreasonable, you know, so...
And, well, I should mention too, that when we spoke with John Presley, he did ask like what kind of, what kind of budget are we thinking for this one? And we mentioned one or two interns, like it wouldn't be hugely expensive, and so he didn't seem to have any kind of major upset by it.
Sure.
So, I think, yeah, we submit, and, and, and just to, again, if the, the notes weren't seen, so, we discussed last at the regular meeting, or, sorry, at the special meeting, we had our individual pairings, but after speaking with John Presley, the advice was that we just move forward with one to two, which we decided to go with the two, that being the Royer and the education, or, sorry, the, the, on the update to the website with the education aspect. And so, as far as the plan goes, he did, John Presley asked why we weren't putting forth that now, rather, rather than what we talked about last, at the special meeting about a, you know, development of, for, to prepare for the plan. He, he thought it would be best that we just hold off until we're ready to submit for the plan, which the next cycle would not come until next year, and so that's why we would add that to those study sessions, so that we can be prepared to submit... would add that to those study sessions so that we can be prepared to submit, because that would be a, as I would imagine, that would be a, a bigger type of grant that we would be, you know, funding them out that we would be requesting would be next year for that plan than what we're even looking at for these two, I would think.
And John did say when we asked him, they are not anticipating a February half-year cycle, so just expect something, you know, an announcement next September about a next, you know, October cycle. And hopefully, you know, if they're going to be using this portal and we get used to how the process works, we can maybe have something ready to drop in as soon as they announce the cycle and we can be ready to go.
All right, so then I just ask, you know, because we're in the middle of the study session, thank you both Dennis and Andrew, are there any other comments or anything that you want to, you know, add to what has already been said about these, these two topic areas that we're going to submit for this CLG grant? All right, hearing none. I think that really concludes our study session.
Is there a drop dead deadline to submit everything, the day before to you, so you have a day to prepare it?
No, I would hope that I would get it by November 13th. I will be gone on vacation the 14th and 15th.
Oh.
But that gives me the 13th and part of my vacation to get them uploaded into the portal. Good thing it's all like on the internet, yeah. So, have everything to me by the 13th if you would.
All right, that's a week from now, it seems reasonable, because it really is put together well, both of these, so I think we're, we just need to get the, the budget and the timeline sorted out. And the timeline is two years and you can figure it out amongst what you're doing. Okay, there are not any announcements. We will now adjourn the public meeting at 8:13 PM. No business will be discussed after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.